Councilmember John Faust, can you attest to the fact that we have a horrible time?
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, I would also let our record show that Councilmember Kurt Rathfield is absent, and we wish him the best of recovery. And Councilmember Sonny Parrotton is in recovery and is with us on Zoom. Good to see you, Sonny. And we will please bow our heads for prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We thank you for our lives. We thank you for this group assembly here to do good in your sight. We hope that you will be with all of us, those that are here and those that are not. And we are gratefully appreciative of the fact that we can worship as we so desire in our city. Thank you so much. Amen. And Councilman Rance, state if you would.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an integrity republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have in front of you our agenda. I entertain a motion at this time that we adopt the agenda as presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Jim, a second by Ann. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Sonny. Unfinished business? We have none, and we'll move into new business. Item number one is consideration and approval for additional capacity reservation from the County Water Sewer Authority. And we will ask our assistant, the manager, Kim Golden, to bring this to us.
Mayor, where is Cherokee?
Pardon?
You said Cobb.
Where is Cherokee? Cherokee County?
Yes.
It could be.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff received notification from Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority late February that they would be implementing a rate increase as of April the first, and that would affect both their consumption rate and also the reserved capacity rate. Just to give you an idea of what the prices will change to, the consumption rate, which is a per thousand gallons, will go up 15 cents, and it's currently $2.40 per thousand gallons, and it will go to $2.55. This is what wholesale customers, which we currently are, a wholesale customer with our reserved capacity amounts. The city currently has 205,463 gallons per day of reserved capacity. And in order to reserve additional capacity after April the first, the price will go from $2.50 per gallon to $5.00 per gallon, which is a significant increase. Staff believes that it would be in the city's best interest to go ahead and reserve, get another increment to take us up to the maximum that we would be able to purchase from Cherokee County without any kind of improvements on their side. They had told us previously that we would be limited to about 190 gallons per minute through current infrastructure, and that equals out to about 273,000 gallons a day. We are currently doing about 137 gallons per minute with our max of 143 gallons per minute. We are still working through some, trying to make sure that everything is working correctly inside that booster pump station that this water actually goes to before it is redistributed through our system. We are not certain if there are going to be any improvements that we need on our side or not, but at this point, we want to try and take advantage of that rate increase before it goes into place and get the maximum that we can so that we have that basically available should we need it in the future. As you know, Sonya has been a big proponent in water diversification, and we are doing lots of different avenues, going lots of different avenues to look for different ways to get water. All of those unfortunately are taking some time. There just aren't any fast solutions. And while costly, Cherokee County is a fast solution to be able to know that we have the water available to be able to serve our customers. This was actually on council's work session agenda that was scheduled for March the fourth that had to be delayed. We did take it to Enterprise Committee. This has been discussed a couple of times, and they have recommended that this be brought to full council for approval. If council decides tonight that that is the avenue that they would like to go, we will need to go ahead and make arrangements for that payment tomorrow before the rate increase takes place. And 60,000 gallons times $2.50 per gallon is $150,000. So staff is asking council to please approve the purchase of the additional 60,000 gallons of reserved capacity before the rates increase April the first. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Counsel, we have a, I entertain a motion at this time for an approval of the 60,000 gallons per day additional, and we will pay Cherokee County $150,000 for that additional. entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion by council?
I have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure.
What are we drawing now on it?
So we're doing about 137 gallons per minute, which is just under that 205,000 gallons of reserve capacity that we have. 205,000 is 143 gallons a minute. And so they are working through, you know, they've been working through some issues at the booster pump station. We've had to make some adjustments to the pumps. They had to do some things with the piping that is actually inside and what comes in there too. They've made some changes in there. And we believe we may have to make some adjustments on the main that actually comes from the meter to the booster pump station. But Lamar is, with turnip seed, is looking at what we might need to do, trying to run the numbers to see if there's a constriction somewhere else. If it's the booster pump station, that might be the problem, what we need to do.
So there's a possibility that we're going to have to upgrade?
We might.
Might.
We might.
Maybe not.
We might, we might not. That is, Lamar's not giving us his final recommendations on what has to be done, so.
Okay. So that was my question. I didn't know if we had.
Sure, we had.
It could be. A grab could be repaired if necessary. I believe it.
It could be. Unfortunately, we just don't know, and we probably won't have that answer tomorrow, unfortunately. So, you know, this is a little putting the cart before the horse. Unfortunately, the timing though of Cherokee County's rate increase, it's such a substantial increase that, you know, staff just really believes we need to take advantage of this and have it already in place.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify because I had written part of it down, and then I was like.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Because I couldn't remember. So, and then I wanted to know if we had, if we might have to do something.
We might have thought. We very well may have to.
Any further discussion by council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, same. And it carries you down this way.
Thank you.
Item number two is consideration and approval of off-duty management software. And we're going to let Chief Dawkins bring this to us. Chief, you're up.
I'm trying to follow that.
Neither's complicated, thank goodness.
So, I don't know if council knows, but police departments all over the world, and Jasper Police Department is the same, we allow our officers to work off-duty jobs. An example would be construction sites, road construction that might be coming in the near future, Walmart, anything like that. The Shamrock Strugg, those are all extra jobs where vendors pay the officers X amount of dollars when they're done. Problem with that is it takes a lot of time for us to get it put together. So how the process works right now is a vendor would call the police department, and they either talk with myself or Sergeant Henderson. Sergeant Henderson would give them the rates, the hours, all the stuff that goes with it, and they would decide how many options they need, and would put it all together. We'd approve it, not approve it, so forth. That takes time, usually a couple of days to go through it all. Once it's done, then the vendor pays the officer, and they go on their way. They get a 1099 at some point. The problem that we come into is liability insurance and workman's comp and stuff like that. Does the vendor pay that when they're working? Does the city pay that if they're working? So a solution to this would be a company called Off Duty Management. Off Duty Management was founded by retired police officers out of Texas, and everybody that works for this company is retired or former law enforcement. So they understand what extra jobs mean to law enforcement officers and how they work. So this company provides the scheduling. They take care of all the scheduling from the vendor. They take it off, they would take off Sergeant Henderson. They would also provide, I want to say it was roughly $150,000 worth of liability insurance along with workman's comp insurance. So great thing is there's no cost to the city on that, also no cost to the vendor. Now, the vendor will have to pay a somewhat of a fee, whatever their fee is from Off Duty Management says, but in the long run, that's a minimal pay that they're going to have to pay and not workman's comp. So that was a good thing. It's very easy. It's set up on our phones. They send us an app. We put it on our website, so it would say something like, need off-duty officers. They click on that. It'll take them to the Off Duty Management website. They set up an account, the vendor would, and they would send out the scheduling, and the officers would, whatever days they needed to work as long as it meets their scheduling. Also, on our website, we have our off-duty policy. So the vendor would be able to see our policy. So when you talk about transparency, there's nothing saying that they don't know our rates, they don't know the minimum hours, they don't know if it fits the policy. All that will be right there in front of them. You, I don't know if in y'all's packet, y'all should have a couple of references, which was as for by Councilman Rathfield during our committee meeting this month. One is from Kennesaw PD, and the other one is from Garden City PD. Both of them, Kennesaw PD has been with them quite, quite some time. Garden City just started with them March 6th, so they're brand new, coming on board. They both, like I said, spoke highly of them. Garden City actually sent a copy of what they call their vendor communication letter, and this is what the vendor would get from us. I mean, we would have to tweak it so it fits our policies and our guidelines, our rates and everything like that. Also, this is good because when they use our cars, when officers use our cars, now we can charge a rate for them using our cars, and that would come straight to the city. We set the rate. It could be a flat rate or it can be an hourly rate. Also, there's a rate for emergency. So if they want to call it eight hours before they meet somebody, it's not going to be $45 an hour, it's going to be $75 an hour. I'm just throwing numbers out there, but instead of, they handle it all. All it does is come to us. We don't have to worry about all the paperwork. It was discussed during the committee meeting. We agree upon most of it. I think we just wanted to get the reference letters to come and see how this really works. I'm asking the council to approve this police department to start utilizing Off Duty Management for our extra jobs.
Chief, if I may, we actually implemented Off Duty Management at my former locality, and so I've had first-hand experience with this company and how professional they are in dealing with our officers. And we did not have any issues during the implementation process or beyond during operations of it. So it seemed to work very well, especially with the vendors. It helped streamline the process. You knew exactly what you needed and what, exactly what was expected of you, and I would just recommend this company as well since I've had personal experience with it.
And the, excuse me, the cost to the city is?
Zero. There is no cost to the city.
Did leave that out. There is actually zero cost to the city. I'll say that again, zero cost to the city.
And it's going to save you some time and energy.
It's going to save a lot of staff and time.
It's just so unusual for you to come in and say that.
You want me to say it again?
We love to hear it.
It might be the only time I get to say that. It also, it has another feature that's good for the department. It also, administrative-wise, we can set up for training, send it out to the officers for just administrative training, as well as if somebody calls in sick and I need somebody to cover a shift, I send it out through that app, and everybody gets it at the same time. So it's, I don't have to make 400 different phone calls.
The $150,000 liability insurance, is that reasonable? Is that what you were used to?
Yes. They actually offer that to, they're, they are in Virginia at a lot of localities. They are just now moving into Georgia, and so they are basing that amount on experience they've had with multiple localities. They have not had any issues, I think, with that amount at all, or else they would have up that liability insurance, I feel sure, before now.
Okay.
That's not including the workers.
No.
That's just what I was.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that did not include.
And then it would also include vehicles, particular vehicles.
That's correct. And so these are event-related, so they're not, most likely not going to be in high-speed chases or any situations where the vehicle can be damaged beyond $150,000 worth of liability. So I think that's why they are, they feel comfortable in setting that at $150,000 because these are policing events and things of that nature, not any criminal policing involved with that.
Okay. Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time to approve the Off Duty Management system that is outlined by Chief Dawkins.
So moved.
Ann moved.
I'll second since we don't have another member of the safety committee here.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries now this way. Item three is consideration, excuse me, consideration and approval of utility development incentives. And we'll ask our city manager, Sonya James, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. And this is the city council. I will, I know I've written a lot for you, but I will try to be brief because it's a beautiful evening, and I'm sure that you don't want to spend it inside. Thank you for coming out on Thursday. So our, this first agenda item, utility development incentives, it's no secret that we are having some major development happening up in the 515 corridor. And it's also no secret that our utility infrastructure needs to catch up to that development. So one of the issues that we are having is one of our lines running in up to 515 is not as, not able to provide as much capacity and fire protection as we need it for the development that is occurring. So the Enterprise Funds Committee got together and we discussed this, and we've actually had several discussions over it. And we felt, the committee felt that the best way to handle this from a, from an engineering and construction process is to work with a current developer that's already contracting with a utility contractor to run lines for those developments and allow them to do the engineering and the construction of a line up Camp Road. And in partnering with the city, what the city would do is a threefold incentive for them. The city would have a cost of construction fee waiver for said developer. As you well know, all new developments have a cost of construction append with it, and we would have the ability to waive that cost of construction in lieu of them doing the work, and that would be $75,880. We would also provide the materials for them to run said water line up Camp Road of 1,500 feet of eight-inch pipe, and that's worth $33,600. So that would be our second phase of helping collaborate with this company. Third would be an invoice allowance for construction and engineering costs. So what would happen with this, in the amount of $40,520, what would happen with this is the said vendor utility contractor would bill the city for the difference between the cost of construction fee waiver and the materials waiver, and the city would pay the contractor directly so as not to involve paying a developer. So the Enterprise Committee thought that this was the most efficient way, the best way to get this line upgraded and the amount of time that we had to upgrade it so that we could go ahead and start building and allowing them to proceed with the development up in that area. We had been contacted from, by other developers that want to develop up there as well, and that eight-inch line would assist in those developments as well. So the Enterprise Committee and staff wanted to come to city council tonight and ask for you to approve upgrading this utility line by developing, by providing these development incentives in the amount of $150,000.
Counsel, you have heard the proposal is put forth by our city manager. I entertain a motion at this time to approve the expenditure of up to $150,000 by the ways that we have described it to secure this particular project.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim. I have a second by.
Sonya.
Sonny. That was motion and a second. Any further discussion by council?
I do have a couple of questions. How far up Camp Road will this take us?
Yeah, it'll be from our 10-inch line on.
AW Lawson.
AW Lawson, up to, up to almost the 515 corridor area.
How much more would it be to go with the 10-inch line?
We could run the numbers for you. We, we actually have 8-inch in our possession, so that would be just something that we're providing materials to this utility contractor to do. We could check on 10-inch, but 10-inch was a considerable amount more expensive than the 8-inch was. And working with the engineers and the developer working with their engineers, they felt that an 8-inch would be compatible for the fire protection that they needed in the area as well as, you know, the water for that, so.
Sonya, may I add some stuff to that, please?
Certainly, sir.
I want to make sure that council understands how complex and ongoing this project is, and apologize for maybe not getting some of this information to you sooner, but this project was first presented to the Building and Development Committee well over a year ago, and it's been a very complex evolution of a project that required quite a bit of cooperation between the DOT, our state representative, and the city to come up with a plan that would even allow this project to even move forward. And one of the most complicated parts of the project has been the requirements set on us by DOT with regard to engineering and demands for the infrastructure, as well as at one point in time, we were considering a road, road construction, and that was going to be tremendously complicated as well. So even though I think it's a great question on the upgrade, the, this has been engineered by DOT-approved engineers, and the engineers with the project themselves have a tremendous amount of experience with site-related developments like this for this chain that's been made public, I think, what that organization is, but for purposes of argument, I'll leave that to prior documentation. But just making sure that, you know, I know it's kind of quick notice, it's been going on for a year. We, we thought this project was going to close back in September, and early on in the process, the committee had had discussions, including myself, Sonya, Mayor Lawrence, and Councilman Rathfield, about what our ultimate cost might be for this project, even though we were fairly, I don't know if we're being defiant or not, but we pretty much told them we don't want to spend a whole lot of money to get this done. And I think this is substantial, even though we knew we probably would. And I think this amount, in a little bit defensive mode, is quite a bit less than what we thought we might have to spend to get this project there. So, thanks, sir, and Sonya.
And I'll add to that just one thing, and that was that if we had had to do that road, it would have been much, much, much more than what, than what the final outcome has been. And so for me, it's like I feel a sense of relief that we can close this project for this amount of money. So, any further?
The DOT is very restrictive on allowing any kind of new entrances into their, on their highway, and it turns out that this is not a new entrance. We were able to use an old Homestead driveway that had been determined to be present on the Lawson property prior to we and the Chevrolet dealership. So it's been a work in progress really for well over a year.
Has it been very legal?
As far as the, as far as the, yes. Yeah, there is no issues.
Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item number four, consideration and approval of building inspector and development specialist job description title change. And Ms. Sonya, if you will, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all recall, for the 2023 budget process, you chose to fund a building inspector for new developments that are coming in to make sure they are adhering to state standards. Staff had, delayed the hiring of that building inspector until we got our planning and development director in and up to speed on all of our new developments. Now she has wowed us all. She is in and up to speed. She is ready to proceed with hiring for this position. There are some things that she would see that, would like to see that are not in our current job description that would elevate this individual that we would be hiring for to have more of a, more of an educational and certification background in order to, in order to meet the needs of what the city has going on. So this is a two-fold request. This is, the first part of the request is, we would kind of like a title change from building inspector to, to our code enforcement official. That looks at all the codes around what is going into building and isn't just inspecting it, but is going in at the onset and telling the developer or the builder what is needed for, for their construction. And the second is to add these, I bulleted, bulleted them. And the second is to add these, I bulleted them out and add these new bullet pieces to our current job description before we start recruitment of this particular job. So I'm just bringing this before council to get your blessing before we start that recruitment process.
Council intends to motion to approve the changes for the name of this job that we're now going to call a building code official, and the additional requirements for an individual to meet those particular specifications.
Do?
Motion?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Motion? Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Did I have a second?
I'll take one.
I'll help pan out here.
You can take one, too. Then I can ask him a question.
I have a second, please.
You have a second?
Has this been through a committee?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
Administrative committee.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have a motion and a second. Discussion by council, obviously, now that we know it's been through a committee, which we did not say, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion by council?
Just a clarification I was gonna let her do, because we did talk about it in admin committee meeting and stuff, but what, I guess what I'm thinking of is, we're changing this with everything that she's got going on, may even have to be changed again, I think we talked about, as far as the erosion control and stuff. Am I correct, am I wrong about that? That won't be the only person you have doing that, I guess is my point.
Oh, no. So I do erosion control, and all of my staff will be certified to do erosion and sediment control as well.
Right.
So we're going through all that now. They will need to have their, their red card as well. So everybody in my department will do erosion and sediment control, because to have one person, you know, if one person's out, if one person, you know.
Right, that was why I kind of wanted to clarify this, is I know we're putting his, hers, whoever, in this one, but we're, everybody in there, I kind of asked that backwards, sorry. That's my thought process today. But everybody in there will be able to do some of that, and this will be the building inspector code enforcement.
Correct. Well, it's more, yeah, the building code enforcement, basically, but, you know, being able to be on-site and seeing a deficient, you know, erosion measure, and being able to say, look, you need to fix that, I don't want to have to give you a violation. So giving, and basically embodying them to be able to work on behalf, because they'll be in the, in the, on-site more often than I would be.
Right.
And tweaks to a job description would not be uncommon.
Right.
Here, please.
Any further discussion by council?
It kind of, there's no pedigree, it looks kind of like a blank check. Sorry.
How do you do that?
We'll go back to our task somewhere besides Pickens County and get them.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same? And the motion carries. Our last item is consideration of CBD, Central Business District enforcement of parking time limit and guidance.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll let Sonya bring it to us.
So as you, you all are aware, we have specific parking restrictions between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 PM in the Central Business District and beyond, in specified areas. Currently, our JPD does not strictly enforce those two-hour limits unless they are called with a complaint, then they will go address it. The issue with that is, if they're called with a complaint, you're generally not treating everybody the same, that you're just picking out. So it has come to our attention that there is a contingent of citizens that is requesting that we, we start adhering to that two-hour parking limit downtown. So it's a process change, which of course affects the elected, and so I wanted to put this on the agenda and give the elected the opportunity to weigh in on whether you want us to start policing the two-hour parking time limit downtown.
Clarification, if I might, on that?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to be talking about policing as it is brought to the attention of council?
No, we will, we will be.
Are we talking about policing all the time?
All the time, yes, sir. During the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Yes.
And?
3:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So this is, we need a motion?
Yeah, so at this point, I intend to motion to approve our CBD enforcement of parking limits and times guidance.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And, and Jim? Motion and a second. Discussion?
My question's gonna be, we have an ordinance, and the question is, are we going to enforce it and?
Cost? We do it about every three years, it seems like, since I've been on the council. People start parking in front of the businesses, and it seems like we go and enforce it from a little while, and then things get better. We've done it, I know, two times, since I've been on the council.
Do you usually get lots of complaints from courts now?
Just a minute. Well, you get a lot of people calling you about the court. I guess they probably get a lot of that, too. I don't know, but that, we get a lot from the court system.
So if I may, I asked Chief to be present for this discussion. I had parking enforcement where I came from, we had a dedicated employee. There are federal standards that prohibit you from touching a person's private property or vehicle, so you can no longer go and chalk tires or put any kind of marks on cars. So if city council does choose to start enforcing this, then we will be bringing a budget amendment to city council to provide some software to assist our officers, because right now we don't have any officers to do parking control. So we would need to bring a budget amendment for that. But I'm gonna open the floor to the chief and give him, let him make some comments about this as well.
Yeah, so to your point, Council, we have, we have that.
I'm in town, yeah.
So?
I hate to do this, but I have a point of order. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and we're letting someone who's not an elected have discussion during our motion. I'm not opposed to listening to the chief's recommendation, but I think we're, I think we're a little out of order, but.
I believe when in discussion and there was a question asked, is he not allowed to answer?
That's the rule, and I'll accept it, but I've made my point.
Do you, could you have a question?
Mayor?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Question for the chief.
Answer the question.
All right, so, yes, we have in the past tried to enforce it. There's not proper signage down there. It's, there's some places that says two-hour parking, some places that doesn't say two-hour parking, but it's for all of the downtown development, if I'm correct. What happens normally is, we do it for a while, the person that is making the complaint, or however you want to look at it, once they get a citation, before they get brought into, you know, we're talking to them, all of a sudden, everybody, it gets pulled back. Now, do, does the police department have enough officers to put up there to do it the proper way? No, we don't, not right now. That is a full-time job, because even when we did chalk tires before the case law, Taylor versus City of Saginaw come out, that was an all-day job. Every two hours you're up there chopping tires, I mean, it's a lot. And I don't have the personnel right now to enforce it, so, yes, there is software out there that would make it easier for that, and they wouldn't have to do that, and it would just be something they can drive by. But if, if we're gonna do it, yes, I would say it would need to be done correct. We'd have to get the citations and all that stuff printed. It would be a thing to, we'd have to get the proper signage.
Y'all should have plenty of citations, and, and, and.
Well, we'd have to, it would have to be implemented into our new software. I mean, that would be something totally different than, it's not the same, it's a, it's a civil matter, it's not a criminal matter.
I just feel like when the citizens call and say, it's something I have to bring, you know, and we have to look at it. So, you know, how we proceed with it, I understand what they're saying, I understand what y'all are saying, but it's gonna be boiled down to what the council wants to do. I mean, I felt like that it just should be brought to the attention, and then we found, of course, that.
And I don't know if I'm allowed to even speak on this, or if I am speaking, I'm sure I'll be told not to. Rewriting, rewriting the ordinance would be something to maybe look at, you know.
So the ordinance was written in 1979.
Right.
And when they came up with this on the board of order, I think we're doing committee week, we're doing committee work during the course of a motion, and I suggest we table this until the committee reviews it.
Have a motion and a second on the table, I have to go through with that. So at this point in time, I would say that if I get no, no vote, then we will, I'll entertain a motion to table. So have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at this point? All in favor, please say aye.
What's the motion, Mayor?
The motion is to accept the consideration of this ordinance for the parking time and limit. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Opposed, same?
Aye.
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 So can we make a motion to?
So at this point, the motion failed.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's changed the motion to review the? To send it to, which committee would this go to? Safety or?
Development and.
Development?
Yeah.
I intend to motion to table this.
Now, let's make a motion to send it to committee.
Aye.
Yeah, because he's got a good suggestion on, I mean, it's an old ordinance.
Well, back in this ordinance, when we had parking meters, that's when we had Coke machines on the sidewalk with parking meters.
Before my time?
Yeah.
Okay, so I intend to motion at this time that we send this back to our development committee.
So moved.
And?
Second.
John? Discussion by council?
I think the other part of the discussion needs to be that this is an ordinance, and there's nothing wrong with enforcing the ordinance as it is now written, but I questioned the idea of ignoring it until we hear back from the committee. If that's what we decided to do, that's why we've obviously ignored it for a while, and addressed it pretty regular.
If I may, we'll put this on the committee agenda in the next two weeks we have a committee meeting.
Can, can I ask the chief a question in respect to, you were talking about with rewriting it, could you give some input on that?
Actually, we need to go back to our attorney for that.
Yes. Well, I'm just saying some input, and then it would definitely have to go to the attorney, but I'm saying because he's gonna.
I can, I can do some research and get that to y'all for y'all's committee meeting, if that.
Yeah, and we can get some other ones, I mean, we're not the only one that writes tickets downtown, so.
No.
We can pull out some other towns or something to see what would work or not work.
Okay, have a motion and a second to send this back to our development committee. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same? And we will send that back to committee. Counsel, at this point, I intend to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.